... mention that to me two or three times. I thought it was just...
You're telling me? Or...
Before I'm being President, I'll call the meeting to order. We have several people from out of town who will be traveling tonight here for item number seven. Would the council permit me to call that one out of order? Go ahead and take it up early?
Yep.
Any objection?
No objection.
Then, uh...
I hope everybody can be safe.
And called the meeting to order. Ordinance seventeen dash ten, Berea College Bond Issue.
Mayor and Council, ordinance seventeen dash ten is an ordinance of the City of Berea authorizing issuance of up to $7,500,000 industrial building revenue bonds, Series twenty-ten, Berea College of the City of Berea, the proceeds of which shall be lent to Berea College to refinance certain outstanding industrial building and educational building revenue bonds that were issued for the purpose of paying the costs of the acquisition, construction, renovation, and equipping of educational buildings located within the City of Berea for use in furtherance of the educational purposes of Berea College, providing for the pledge of revenues for the payment of the bonds, authorizing a loan agreement appropriate for the protection and disposition of the revenues, and further to secure the bonds, authorizing a bond purchase agreement, tax regulatory agreement, and assignments, and authorizing such other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds. That is a summary of the ordinance I have been provided with and have reviewed the final drafts, I assume, gentlemen, of the, all the bond documents and have approved them from the standpoint of City of Berea, as I reported at the first reading. This is a pass-through situation. It does not affect the credit of the City of Berea. It is not subject, the City of Berea is not subject to any claim, nor is the, as, in the event of a default, nor are the assets or taxing authority of the city subject to any claim. There are provisions for complete indemnification of the city, and it is the, this is a refinance of previous issues, and I, from a legal standpoint, it meets my approval.
May I have a motion on the ordinance?
I shall move.
Second.
Motion to approve or adopt by Mr. Wagers, second by Ms. Farmer. Any discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none, then please respond appropriately to the call of the roll. Mr. Burnside?
Obey.
Mr. Terrell?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Ms. Farmer?
Aye.
Mr. Wagers?
Aye.
Mr. Lakes?
Aye.
Mr. Van Winkle?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted?
Your Honor, introduce myself, Roger Peterman, with the law firm, Peck, Chaffin, Williams, we're, bottom counsel on this, I was just touching base with Randy, reminding, it needs to be officially announced that there's a public hearing for this, too, to see if anyone has comments, that was advertised, obviously it's rare that we ever have any comments on these, but it's appropriate to just make people aware that this is also a public hearing.
This is also a public hearing. Do we have any members of the public who would like to come forth and comment upon the proposed bond issue? Please step forward, we would be glad to hear your comments. I see none, Mr. Peterman. Will that... Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And if the, I anticipate that we may have a number of comments from members in the audience about a detour that is going on. Before we get into that, if I may, continue to recognize Maggie Kribble and the Chili Cook-Off Award.
Yeah, they are. Where's the chili?
It's in our belly.
Tonight's a good night for it.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. In 2009, the Parks and Recreation Department approached the police and fire chiefs to see if they would be willing to assist Madison County Special Olympics in our fundraising efforts. As, especially people with children realize that athletic sports programs can be very costly, and we do a lot of fundraising to ensure that our athletes are able to have the equipment that they need. Both chiefs agreed and entered into a cook-off. In 2009, we raised $1,800 for Madison County Special Olympics. In 2010, on November sixth, the police and fire departments entered into a chili cook-off once again. 2009, the fire department won. 2010, police. Huh. Not a coincidence, not a coincidence. And actually, I'm proud to announce that in 2010, we were able to raise $3,000 for Madison County Special Olympics, which enables us, again, to wear our warm-ups, to have the equipment for track and field that we need, or basketball. So tonight, we would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank our police and fire chiefs. So, if I could have your permit, please? All right, and this is just a very small, small token of our appreciation, but we would like to present you both with plaques of appreciation. Tommy?
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, thank you.
And Ben?
Thank you.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you very much.
Without our chiefs, none of this would have been possible, so again, we do sincerely appreciate all of their efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Joyce Pack, Lego Robotics Group.
There's a bookmark inside.
Oh, that's the boy's got the little electric. Yeah. Eyes of the robots.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Shall I just stand here, or is there any other particular place?
I want to turn that microphone around here.
Hello? Yeah. Hello? We are FLL Team Three-Six-Six-One, Rise of the Robots. For those of you who don't know what FLL is, which is probably all of you, it is an organization designed to inspire and recognize science and technology, and help nine through fourteen-year-olds discover unique innovative ways to identify problems and find solutions. This year, our challenge is to explore the world of biomedical engineering, to repair injuries, overcome genetic predispositions, and maximize bodies' potential with the purpose of leading happier and healthier lives. This year, we hope to accomplish that with our solution, the BTDS chip, which we are here to present to you on this night. Firstly, I'd like to introduce the team. Some of you may remember us, I know you do. Josiah Pack of age fourteen, and I work on mainly research and research-related things. And this here is Shimon Eisenberg of age thirteen, and he programs this here robot, which we call Alfred Snackenberg. Yeah. And Snyder of age thirteen also, and she is the team captain and brains of the operation. So...
He's breaking on nerves.
Beginning of the year, we took a field trip to Rock Castle Regional Respiratory Center in Mount Vernon, and walked by a room of a girl that was twelve years old, and her parents were crying by her bedside. And so, we asked them, what was their story? And they asked the person giving the tour, what was their story? And they said that their parent, they've just given her parents one week to live. And that hit us pretty hard, because we realized if she was our age, what if that was us? What, what, if we wanted to, if we knew someone had the opportunity to make our lives better, we want them to take that chance. And, yes, we would, indeed. So, we studied their respiratory system, and we broke it down to one thing, the phrenic nerve. See, one of the leading causes of respiratory-related death is due to spinal injuries, and this is, of course, because of the phrenic nerve, which transmits its signals down the spine from the brain to the diaphragm, which controls the breathing. Phrenic nerve, there's not a whole lot you can do. I mean, you can be hooked to a ventilator your whole life, forces air, and you're unable to talk, and you can't go anywhere and do the things you want to do, because you always have a big ventilator hanging over you. Yeah, I wouldn't like that very much. So, we have researched and done research-related things, and we have come up with our solution, that is, the BTDS chip. Here's how it works. There's one chip in the brain that converts brainwaves into a radio signal, and are sent to chips in the diaphragm. They receive the radio signal, and it has electrodes built in that convert the radio signal into electrical pulses, and stimulate through the electrodes, which pulsate through the electrodes, to stimulate the diaphragm, thus causing the lungs to expand and contract, thus putting the disabled people back into service. We took this solution into a regional robotics competition on December fourth, and we won the champions award. Champions award. And we are advancing to state competition on January twenty-ninth, and hope for lots of support from our community. And that would be all. Yes.
Well, we don't get a demonstration, or would we have to be hooked up to get a demonstration?
Yeah.
So, the one problem is these fall off, both of them.
What do you do when you go to state competition? Do you have to set it up, or do you just describe your...
We have to set it up. It has a robotics table, and it has different missions. So, you program and build the robot to kind of suit the missions, and for it to run. This one is to push an arm that grabs kind of a mail carrier, and it...
It forces air into the lungs, see what this does.
And so, that would send it back in base after it didn't initiate.
Okay.
Congratulations.
She's a boss.
We'll resume our regular agenda and recognize visitors who have comments to bring before the council on matters not otherwise on the agenda. Do we have any such visitors?
Should I speak here? Okay. I live on Herndon Street, and...
Tell us your name.
My name is Holly Troyer, and I live on Herndon Street, and I'm also representing a few people that couldn't attend tonight. We're having a major issue with a detour on, on Dinsmore Street, on Herndon Street. It's, it's dangerous, it's destructive. The stop sign's been taken down twice now. Our tiny residential neighborhood wasn't made to support this volume of traffic, and I've been told a lot of conflicting things about how long this is going to go on. Do any of you have answers to how long this detour is, is going to continue?
Mr. Stone, could you give us an update on any information that we have about the project and that issue?
We will have a meeting next week with the construction company to try and narrow down their final schedule for this year. The ending of this project is scheduled for August of 2011. The present detour going Herndon, Dinsmore, Fourth Street is to accommodate the traffic because we have the westbound lane shut down at the present time. Now, we're going to have to flip that and probably go around bridgeway crossing later, but the bridge, they'll start pouring that bridge on Friday of this week. More than likely, we'll have the lights at the bridge throughout the winter. They're now putting in the structure for all the drainage on the, what I'll call the west side, or going up the hill. If, when they get that in, then they will put a base coat of blacktop, and if there's a time that this year that they will not be working, then we'll have two-way traffic during that time. So, you know, it's, we've also talked with the state, the mayor did last Thursday, another meeting that we had. They're, they are going to put some more signs on four-twenty-one, trying to direct some of the larger trucks that are coming out of Jackson County to use four-twenty-one. We have put some signs ourselves at Short Line Pike, asking traffic to avoid the constructions on and use short line. Short line is a city street, so any damage that's done, we're responsible for the fixing that damage. One of, one of the hurdles that we had to get across when they design, when they first do a design of a street like this, and there's closures of lanes, they also have to have a state approve, since this is a state road, detour plan. And since this is considered a city project, the majority of the detour needed to be on city streets, not on county or state-maintained highways. They've broadened that now, and they're working with us to try to use Gabbertown, Short Line Pike, and four-twenty-one, which we, we are hoping to cut down the gravel trucks, log trucks, eighteen-wheeler type situation, and give them another avenue, because it's just too tight for them to make that turn through there, and I know you've had that problem. We also have come through, which is an imposition for people that live there, and trying to ask people not to park on the street. That gives you less conflict, but probably, as you see it, faster traffic.
Exactly.
And, and I've asked, I've asked our police...
They're rude, they, they pass, they actually pass, pass you on the road to get around you.
I've asked our police department to be mindful of the things that's happening there. We will try to post something, let them, let you know what Garrison Construction's plans are throughout the remainder of December and January.
So, am I hearing that this will continue to be used as a detour? Because I, and many people that live there, feel that this is absolutely unacceptable. It's, it's a dangerous situation that's been imposed on our small residential neighborhood. And, you know, my question to, to everyone here is, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when somebody is hurt, who is liable? Who's going to be liable when someone is injured? Because I've, I've, I have to jump up on the grass constantly when they come flying around that corner.
Well, it's our, it's our responsibility...
Laura has a child.
It is our responsibility to try to have some control of the traffic, and we'll do a, a better job at that, but when we have, with any street roadway, that you do a major reconstruction job on, the unfortunate thing, we have to have a detour. We have to be able to manipulate the local traffic, people have to be able to get homes and, home in that area, and we try to, it is very hard on people who are on small streets. Like you, you have been for years, it's very quiet, now they have twenty-four-hour traffic.
It's not just hard, it's, it's dangerous.
Right, and we...
It's, it's a dangerous condition, and again, I'm going to ask, who's liable for, for injury when someone's hurt?
Well, I think that, I think that has to do with the, if, and heaven forbid, if there's an accident, you know, the liability then has to be determined at the time of the accident.
Okay, well, I just wanted to go on public record as stating you have imposed a dangerous condition in our neighborhood. And I think Laura has a few things she'd like to say about it.
My name is Laura Coon, and I've lived in Berea for fourteen years. I just came back from Iraq at the end of oh-eight, and I bought my first house, and I picked Dinsmore Street, because it's a quiet neighborhood, it reminded me of my home growing up in Lexington, and I have a five-month, a five-year-old daughter. She rides the bus, she also gets off in front of our house, and I saw a car go around the bus. And if you've seen our street, you would know that is pretty much a, impossible, pretty much, but I saw it. And being a veteran, you literally want to, you want to do something. I understand that it's business, construction, you got to get stuff done, people have to work, this and that. I know, because my job in the army was a truck driver, and I also know that carrying a lot of tons, like they do with the logs, that's a lot of tonnage on that street, but it's also Boeing, and it's concerning me as a homeowner, because the city lines are right in the middle of that street. And I've already had sewage problems, but is there any way those trucks can get out of our neighborhood? Because my child cannot play in the front yard, I bought her a new bike, I'm teaching her to ride a new bike, and I've got nowhere else to go with that bike. But I also want to ask, if, if that can't be done, can we please put a slow sign, a something? And at the end of our block, can we have a barrier, like where the dead end is? If we can have some kind of barrier there, because I don't know how many times I've called the cops to come down there and pick up someone that was drunk in their car behind a house. So, I mean, I want to make my neighborhood safe. I'm representing my neighborhood.
The barrier you're talking about, the end of Dinsmore going into city property?
Yes, sir. And I also see children go back there and play, they play soccer, football, that kind of stuff. I go down there and fly my kite, Holly and all my other neighborhood people, they go down there with their dogs and stuff. But I, also as a veteran, I want my neighborhood to be safe. I'm not going to come home and live in the same crap that I lived over there for eighteen months, and come home and live around it again, and not do nothing about it. Just because it's a small city, it can't cost that much to put either a speed sign, slow children, or even a couple, while the people are working during the day, have some people down on Dinsmore directing properly. Because they're, they're cutting that curve, and those trucks can't cut that curve. I know, I drove a HET that has forty-eight tires, so I know. But that, but I know that everybody has a job to do.
We can do the signage. We've lowered the sign, we did go ahead and put fifteen mile-per-hour signs, now people have to really observe that or not, that, yeah, we put some no parking signs up, but we can, we can put some more slow children.
On Dinsmore?
Yeah.
Not on Herndon, I've already seen a sign there, I'm talking on on Dinsmore.
Yeah, we can do that.
Because I don't, I don't see nothing on there, but would you consider to block the dead end off?
Uh, Randy, is there anything that we could do to, to not allow the truck traffic? I mean, I don't know, I mean, it seems to me like you can detour the, the big trucks somewhere besides...
I don't...
I mean, if they're turning in twenty-one, they don't need to be coming through there.
What we try to do is get their attention with signs on Short Line, Gabbertown, and now four-twenty, I don't know if they put the signs up on four-twenty-one, they just said that they would, I don't know that they're there. That's about, we had to close because of the short length that we had by the light, trying to stop getting proper distance, we had to close Silver Creek Drive, you know, so you now use up at the apartment area, going through there. When we looked at bringing trucks across into our area, you can't make the, it's very difficult and tight down by our utility building to come through there with trucks also. It's a very small, tight situation, we understand. You all, we'll try to have more police presence, I'll ask Chief Gregory now.
Well, it's not just police, I voted for all you guys, because I have faith and respect for you guys to do the right thing, because you put that faith in me to go over there. Now that I'm home, I want to put in my ideas, because I can actually say stuff now and not be looked down on as a soldier. But where the, like, here's Herndon, here's Dinsmore, there's, there's Herndon, that's how you turn on there, couldn't you just temporarily widen those up to where the trucks can make that wide turn?
Only, we would have to look at what radius and what right-of-way that we have in that area. I can't answer that question, because we may not have any more right-of-way along that street than presently is from curb to curb, so I couldn't answer that question.
And what about going through that dead end and cutting through Berea Municipal up that road? Because that leads straight to twenty-five. There's no really hard turns, sharp turns, like it is going on Dinsmore to Herndon, and then back on Forest, and then so on and so on. If you go straight through Dinsmore, cut through Berea, and then go up that hill, that hill goes straight to twenty-five. And that, that's an open land, right? I mean, I don't, I don't know how the land is here.
Center Street's tight there, too.
I mean, that'd be going across our field, I don't know, you can...
You got to build a road.
Yeah.
Can we, can we look at possibly a designated truck route, with this suggestion? Because that, that is really crowded there for trucks to come through.
I'll, I'll talk to District Seven again tomorrow, see where they are with their signage and, and...
I seen a tractor and driller coming through the other day, and I think it come from McCumberys out there. I mean, from the standpoint, they come through and they turned around at, at the church, and was going back after they unloaded this stuff, they don't know.
Yeah, they need some designated truck route signage.
Something that says truck route, I mean...
Yeah.
If you need volunteers to do that till you get a sign, I can go out there and stand out there all day, and point, I'm used to it, so, I mean, I can show them, you know what I mean? I mean, I'm just trying, I'm helping you by helping me, so...
Right.
But that, that's just my ideas, because I'm just trying to throw that out there. As a, as a truck driver, like I was saying, our little road is Boeing, and with the tonnage on those trucks, I do not think that road is going to last anymore. So, thank you, that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Mr. Stone, maybe you answered it. I just wasn't sure if I heard it. Did you have an idea on how much longer that one way will take?
I already don't. They're a couple weeks behind schedule right now and I just need to sit down with them. I know at one time they talked about at the end of this year shutting down and coming back in March, which means that they would be at a point where they could open it up to two lane. The bridge would probably still be one lane.
But if they got to that point, it would open up for a couple of months.
The contract, any construction contract says that they have to have one lane open at all times. That gives you access for emergency vehicles. And they shut that down. The ideal situation is something like we did on Glade Road. To do a construction project like this is to cut, shut the road down totally and give them the opportunity to work and do what they needed to do. But in this particular situation with so many housing, houses, subdivisions, we have to maintain that one open lane at all times. That's the reason they're just working on the drainage on one side and one side of the bridge. Once that side of the bridge is done, we'll move the lights across. Traffic will go on the new side that they're constructing now. The other side will be closed while they demolish that and rebuild it.
You're gonna be meeting with the construction company in a couple days.
Yeah, next week. We've got some more issues that we have to discuss with them.
Maybe another person or two helping direct some traffic, help slow some folks down, too.
I talked to the police chief earlier and he's thinking about putting a car down there and try to slow the speed down. Is that...
Yeah.
The speed on Herndon, I think they say is pretty dangerous there.
Yeah, people are rude. They'll honk and pass you right there on Herndon Street. But what about, I mean, can you just make the detour Gabbertown Road? Can you just detour on another road?
You really can't do that. I mean, I wish, you know, we wish that we could, but you also got people maybe coming in to, that lives in that area or visiting in that area or... You know, we've also dealt with, we have the one, well, we have several businesses there, but we've also tried to work with those businesses not to block their driveway. But a mandatory hard shutdown, I don't think wholly that we could say that we could do that.
Right. I didn't mean like everybody. I just meant the majority of people passing through, not people that live in the area or...
I think many also live there. I now go scaffolding. I just don't go that way to get home. So, many, many people, I think, have changed their routes, but...
But just to be clear, then, we, how long can we expect this to go? Through the end of December and then that's it?
No, no. The construction, the construction limits goes through August of 2011.
So, we're gonna be...
That doesn't mean that they're always gonna be coming by your street.
Right. That's what I'm asking.
I can't answer that right now till I meet with them. The next one's probably gonna be Bridge, Way Cross, and that way, you know, the next time. I mean, we have to have some way of getting those around. That's what we looked at.
Because, you know, I just wanna say, me and many people that couldn't attend tonight for various reasons, don't want it. We don't, it's not a matter of speed, it's not a matter of keeping trucks out. We just, we don't want it. It's, you know, there's a lot of communities here in Berea that wouldn't put up with this. And we don't feel like we should be the ones that are being dumped on here. So, you know, we don't like it and it's dangerous, so that's all I have to say about it.
Other individuals with comments to bring to the council. Council would turn its attention to the minutes of November 16th. Do you have changes?
Move adoption of the minutes is submitted.
Motion to approve the minutes is submitted by Ms. Farmer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Little. Discussion, questions, comments? All in favor of approving the minutes as distributed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Minutes are approved. Next, under old business, number six, ordinance 11-10.
Ordinance 11-10 is an ordinance of the City of Berea, Kentucky, adopting the amended Land Management and Development Ordinance 1804 as amended by revising Section 401.3 to expand the requirement of development in R3, B1, B2, B4, PSF, institutional P1, I1, and I2 zoning classifications, and requiring as-built plans to be submitted to ensure compliance with development plans. Two, by revising Section 406.3 to require that single or two-family residences permitted in other than R1 and R2 classifications shall adhere to R3 dimensional requirements. That all townhomes shall adhere to R1T dimensional requirements and condominiums to dimensional requirements of the zoning classification in which it is located. Three, revising Section 406.52 to provide for additional allowable conditional uses in single-family dwellings. Four, revising Section 410 Sub 4 to provide that restaurants with drive-through have one parking space for each three seats. Five, adopting revised Exhibit D regarding drainage adjustments. Six, amending Appendix G by adding G-8 relating to certified as-built checklists and adopting Appendix Zero, oh, I guess it is, providing for grading and filling requirements. And seven, by making such other minor revisions as may appear in the revised text attached here, too. This is a recommendation from the Planning Commission after going through an extended process and hearings as a second reading.
May I have a motion on the ordinance?
So moved.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Burnside. Is there a second?
Second.
Taken by Mr. Lakes. Discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none, please respond appropriately to the call of the roll. Mr. Van Winkle? Mr. Lakes?
Aye.
Mr. Wagers?
Aye.
Mr. Jennings?
Aye.
Ms. Farmer?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Terrell?
Aye.
Mr. Burnside?
Aye.
Ordinance is adopted. Before moving to new business, I'd like to call on Dale Van Winkle to do some new business of his own.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'd like to introduce to you and to all the citizens tonight a new employee that we started yesterday. Her name is Amanda Haney. Amanda comes from a background of construction. She has a degree from the Eastern Kentucky University in construction management and technology. She's worked on several projects on the depot as manager and working in those projects and has a good background in construction. She has been hired as our Code's Enforcement Officer. And after the first of the year, right now, she's learning the office procedures and all that, but after the first of the year, she'll start working on her building inspection certification and in the future will be one of our building inspectors. So, we're looking forward to Amanda. We think she'll do a great job and we're glad to have her on board.
Welcome, Amanda. Dale? Next then, number eight, ordinance 18-10.
Ordinance 18-10, I don't know, why did this print like this? Do you know, Randy?
My Windows 7 and your...
Okay. I'll get a clean copy of it. Ordinance 18-10 by summary is an ordinance of the City of Berea, Kentucky, amending the Land Management and Development Ordinance as amended by adding a provision pertaining to conditional use permits, providing that the harboring or maintenance of chickens in residential zone classifications shall be permitted as a conditional use and subject to certain conditions and limitations. First reading.
Any comments or questions? Bid review, depot renovation and Folk Center roof.
I have two recommendations to bring before the council this evening for renovation projects that we've had. First of all, the Folk Center. We advertised for a roof replacement. Opened the bids on September 28th for the replacement of the roof at the Folk Center. And tale in that bid package was that the roof will be stripped down to its original deck material. Any rotten and damaged decking material will be replaced. All-new fascia board will be installed on the building. A self-sealing ice and water barrier will be installed on the entire roof system. A breather blanket then was added to the top of the ice and water barrier to allow the roof to breathe. Neither one of those was on the original construction, which has caused the detriment to the roof probably about 10, 12 years sooner than it should have been. Covering the breather and the ceiling blanket is an 18-inch wide 30-pound felt. There'll be added between each run of the red cedar shakes. Shakes of the premium grade lit red cedar and they're also to be sprayed with fire retardant treatment. Also, all the valleys, 16-ounce copper flashing will be added to all valleys and extended up the walls and chimneys as flashing. Then, a red cedar ridge and hip cap units will be installed. Also, a 6-inch half-round 26-gauge galvanized steel gutters and downspouts are to be installed on the building. We had three bidders on this project. Richmond Guttering at $249,999. Brighton bid $217,000. Superior Home Improvement bid $138,398. We checked Superior's references and their work come out, actually very, very good. Everybody that I could talk to. And we would recommend, we have a budgeted amount of $150,000 for the roof replacement on that building. We have about six major leaks in that building. We have two places where the floor is starting to turn up because of these leaks. So, we would recommend that the Superior Home Improvement, $138,398, be awarded the bid for the roof replacement.
Questions or comments on the recommendation?
I move to accept the bid.
Motion by Mr. Van Winkle to accept the recommendation.
Take it.
Second by several council members.
Just choose anybody.
I believe Virgil got it first.
I'll give it to Mr. Wagers. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Bid's awarded then to Superior Roof.
How soon can they start?
Where they from, Randy?
Winchester.
Are they the ones done the, they didn't do the dresser building?
No, it's Brighton that did that. No, they can start at any time.
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting. Sorry. Yeah, actually, they're really, really ready to start.
Damage to the floor is a real concern because that building is used so much by so many different groups and I hate to see it.
Guarantee you this weekend if it rains, I'm in trouble.
No, I hope it doesn't rain.
The second bid that we had was for the renovation of the L&amp;D Depot or house that our tourism commission. We bid out that particular job about four or five weeks ago, maybe longer. We had several bidders on this particular job. We also had some add alternates and some deducts as the bid went out. We've had two public hearings that several of our council members and a few people from our community came to look at the print and the scope of the work. In the last couple of weeks, as we've discussed the renovation of this building, our original intention was to renovate the building itself. During the process of design, we talked about adding 2,100 square feet to the back of this building. Would be open space for use. And we talked about that during our public sessions and other sessions that we talked with Tony Worley. After looking at our budget of $550,000, so what we had in our original budget, and looking at the initial goal was to renovate the building itself. We have, would like to recommend to you this evening that we accept none of the alternates, bid alternates or additions, that we strictly renovate the building. The low bidder on the renovation of the building is Gilpin Construction out of London at $499,000. And that's what we recommend this evening.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Does, does that count putting a roof over that existing part back there?
Yes, sir, it does.
We will dry it in then.
Yes, sir.
Does that count?
That's part of, that's part of the, yes, sir.
Fixing the, drying it in and painting it and...
Yes, sir, yes, sir. That's part of the renovation.
Just making no, no...
That's the renovation of the original building and that is included.
Okay, that's, but that's making it all new looking.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
May I have a motion then on the recommendation?
So moved.
Motion to accept the recommendation by Mr. Burnside?
Second.
Taken by Ms. Farmer. Discussion? All in favor of the recommendation to allow Gilpin Construction to have the bid at $499,000? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
No.
I see two noes. The motion carries. Committee reports. Audit Finance, Mr. Jennings?
Nothing to report.
Human Resources, Ms. Farmer?
Yes, I was going to report that the Human Resources Committee met November the 18th for interviewing a candidate for the Code's Enforcement Officer. You met our candidate tonight. We recommended that Amanda Haney be hired for this position. And Dale has explained, I think, part of the rationale for that. She's a very talented, capable young lady. And the Human Resources Committee is, I would like to meet Thursday evening, this Thursday. That's December the 9th at 5:15. Brief, brief interview for a candidate for police officer. And I think we only have one candidate, is that correct, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it'll be a brief meeting, 5:15 Thursday. Thank you. That's all I have.
Parks Committee, Mr. Lakes?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Public Works, Mr. Burnside?
No report, Mr. Mayor. Do have a question. Maybe this is not the time, but I'll use it since I'm on now. Question came up at our work session about whether we're gonna have a meeting or not on the 21st of December. I don't know when we're gonna get to discuss that, but...
A meeting of the council?
Of the council, yes.
We have one scheduled. It's our regular third meeting or second meeting, the third Tuesday of the month. Does the council not want to meet?
I would like to meet.
You would like to meet? Do we have matters to be considered, Mr. Stone? Any action items or activity?
Well, from the agenda that we have this evening, there could be second reading, would be second reading of the 18-10. We also have the bid document is out for the garbage collection service for next year. That's to be in your office by the 4 o'clock that evening with bid opening that evening at 6:30. If we chose not to have a meeting, then we notify those who have picked up bid package of the change of a bid opening, but so... Anything pressing would be the second reading or the opening of that bid.
At this point, we have a meeting scheduled. Council want to do otherwise?
I hate for Mr. Burnside to be disappointed. I don't like for him to be disappointed.
Jenny, I'm trying to hold you to the very last. Get that last meeting in and you're ready to fly away.
So, that means that you would also agree that you'd be willing to meet on the 21st?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
I don't want to, but I'm gonna miss these guys, some of them, so...
So, for fraternity reasons, you'll be here also.
Only fraternity reason.
Well, it doesn't seem like we've got much of an impet, or a movement not to meet. Anybody disagree? Is there a motion to cancel the meeting? Sounds like we're gonna meet then.
We'll meet.
Okay. Do we have department heads? Any department head like to supplement the written report? Ms. Kribel?
Sorry, Randy.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to take a quick minute, as we're all rushing around with the Christmas holiday and trying to get ready during the month of December, that the Parks and Recreation Department has a slew of activities that are gonna take off with the bang starting in January. Everything from toddler playtime to indoor movies at the folks center. We've got a little something for everyone. But, of course, most of us like to indulge a little bit over the holidays. So, I don't want people to forget that, starting January the third, we will start the new year with our fitness, our group fitness programs and classes. On Mondays and Wednesday nights, starting at five forty-five, we'll have our brand-new cardio tone class, which we're very excited to introduce. Tuesdays and Thursday nights, we'll be zumba, so a little Latin dance for everyone. And we also have a variety of other classes for people to try. So, if you're looking for the gift that keeps on giving, we do invite people to purchase their discount pass cards for our fitness classes. Those are on sale right now and can be picked up at the park office. If anyone has questions about that particular program or any other program, they can visit our website or call us at nine-eight-six-nine-four-zero-two.
What a deal.
It is. Discount passes, it's, it's a great gift.
Anything further?
No, that's all I've got.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other department head like to supplement the written report? City administrators report?
Continuation to talk about the Prospect Street's... Uh, project. We have had several questions by residents along that corridor as we work. I will say that Garrison Construction has done a very good job of working with those people and tried to answer their questions. And I have also, and appreciate Mr. Carter, he's also gotten several questions directed to him, so we are trying to answer daily the questions that we have from residents down there. We have talked to District Seven, reiterate that last week, about trying to use Gabbertown, Short Line Pike, and four-twenty-one as detours, and we'll continue to move in that particular direction. We had a meeting last Thursday afternoon with District Seven concerning the Menelus Pike project. About five months ago, the state adopted that as their project. The involvement that the city will have, we will be responsible for the movement of utilities on that project. The state presently is doing the title searches for the thirty-three pieces of property that has to be bought to supply the right-of-way for that construction project to take place. They're telling us, under their best guess estimate, that's gonna be one year for purchase of that property. But they have, are trying to speed that process up, and we are staying in constant contact with them, with the school system, with District Seven, about what we can do as far as getting this project moved as quickly as possible. That's a three-lane section of road from the intersection of bypass back to Mayday Road with sidewalks on both sides. Also, we are looking at, and worked diligently in the last week, about Mayday Road connecting Mayday Industrial Road and Menelus Pike and the railroad crossing. We are looking at, we've asked CDP engineers to look at the upgrade of that road, widen it to two twelve-foot lanes with shoulders. Also, we're talking with the State Department of Transportation in Frankfurt and with CSX Railroad to see what possibilities we can get about getting traffic, uh, gates set up at that crossing prior to the school opening. Because what's going to happen, and we do realize and we sympathize with the concerns of the Madison County School System, is that a large percentage of your students do not ride buses. The buses may be told not to use the crossing, but the parents will use the crossing. So, it's, it's really imperative on us as a city to work with this particular project, even at the upgrade of Menelus Pike. We need those gates, so we will be bringing updated reports to you. There's a pot of money, it's federal money, that the railroad companies contribute to, that's distributed to each state, and then you make a, your plan, and you apply for that money to get the gates or work on the at-grade crossing, whatever has to be done. CSX actually does the work. We're also looking at it as the use of some of our own funds, if that doesn't happen, to see that this project goes through. And that, that we will be presenting and be talking about as we go forward in our amended budget, in our new budget. As we've already stated, changing topics, personnel openings. We still have the one codes administrative assistant. We have two police officers' positions open, and the interview will be with a certified officer on Thursday evening. We have two part-time positions open for weekend work, at Tourism Office. Regretfully, as far as personnel, this, this morning, we received Doty Harris' letter of termination. He won't be able to return, and it's very unfortunate. We do appreciate what he has done at Madison County School System as a school resource officer. He loved the job, and he was highly respected. He was national, he was recognized nationally for what he did down there, and we, we bid him Godspeed, and, and we hate to have this happen, but it's, it's, it's where we are today. Mr. Van Winkle has, is setting up with Kelly Baker at District Seven, a meeting to talk about intersection lighting with the bypass. Because every time we ask him, we, we're gonna go, he's gonna go down there and meet, we're going face-to-face and make sure that we get some kind of resolve on this, so. Also, this week, working with our utilities, we've ordered the materials needed for the lighting for Hidden Creek and Brook Green. We will need three right-of-way or easements across yards that we'll be working on in the next month or so with some of the residents there to see if we can bury the lines across their property. So, we won't have any overhead lines in either one of those subdivisions. Monday, the thirteenth, Billy, six o'clock Monday?
Sir?
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock Monday.
Sorry. Mickey Mills will be here in this room to talk to the council and interested parties concerning recycling. Mr. Mills was a former mayor of Frankfurt and has worked in the, with Lexington and also now Bluegrass Recycling. As we go into our new contract for garbage service, and how can we improve our recycling numbers here in the city. So, that'll be six o'clock, Monday, the thirteenth, here.
He's a very astute individual. He knows, he knows what he's talking about.
Thursday, the sixteenth, at the Artisan Center is our employee appreciation dinner. And the twenty-second of December at five-thirty will be the swearing-in of the mayor and the two thousand and eleven and twelve council members. Are there any other, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Stone?
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one letter I received from Time Warner informing us that due to the increasing cost of programming, along with other operating cost increases, Time Warner finds it necessary to adjust basic and standard tier rates effective January one. Basic cable service will rise from twenty dollars and sixty-eight cents to twenty-two ninety-five per month. Standard will change from forty-two seventy-three to forty-six dollars a month. However, eighty percent of Time Warner customers will not experience a rate increase because most customers subscribe to one of their service packages and enjoy the guaranteed twelve-months rate.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment? I've been talking with Time Warner and also with Linda Aine, who is our consultant when it comes to our franchise. Our franchise is up in April with Time Warner, so we will be bidding out that again. So, we did lose quite a bit of leverage when the state communications tax was passed about four years ago, five years ago, and they, they, all the money goes to them, and they held us harmless for that money. But we will have an opportunity to bid that out and to try to talk with Time Warner about their service and, and their rate increases at that time.
Thank you. Council comments? Mr. Burnside?
Nothing.
Mr. Terrell?
No comment.
Mr. Little?
No comment.
Ms. Farmer?
No comment.
Mr. Jennings?
Nothing.
Mr. Wagers?
I was going to bid her by farewell, thanking her for being on council the last two years, but since we're gonna vote, have another meeting, I'll save it the next time.
Mr. Lakes? I believe Virgil won another one.
No comment, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Van Winkle?
My friends.
Meetings adjourned.